I'll get the meeting started. Call the meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, everyone. Before we get going, I'll do a quick roll call vote or roll call. Uh, Council Ruffelman.
Present.
Council Hutchison. I'll come back to her. Council Youngman.
Here.
Council Merritt.
Present.
Council Papke.
Here.
Council Law.
Present.
And myself. Uh, Council Hutchison, are you with us?
This is Patricia. She was dialing in, so I'm not sure if she's made the connection yet or not, but she's trying to get in.
Okay. Give her a second to make sure she can get in.
So she just called. I'm gonna forward her the email again. She was just having a hard time getting in.
Okay. Well, I'll move on real quick. Uh, uh, Mr. Forrester, are there any additions to the agenda?
There are none, Mayor. Thank you.
I actually do have one addition to the agenda.
I'm sure you do. Sorry about that. Jump the guns.
That's okay. It's actually more of a rearrangement of the agenda. Uh, Mayor, the executive session on, which is item nine, will actually be prior to adjournment. So the city council will be moving to executive session and then coming back into regular session tonight.
Thank you, Jared. Did I give Janet a few minutes to make sure she gets on before we move forward?
Eric, is she making progress or do we need to get started?
I'd get started. I'll try to walk her through it.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. And if everybody's had a chance to, to, uh, read the consent agenda, I'm open to a motion to approve.
This is Council Youngman, and I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hey, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor. Janet said she wanted to chat about the consent agenda, so she'll be right on.
All right.
Yeah. Jason, I'm here now.
All right. Awesome. Okay, well, we only had a motion and to approve. There was no second yet on the consent agenda. So I want to make sure you have a chance if you had something you wanted to discuss.
I just wanted to talk about the Wild Ride Brewing LLC. That's part of the consent agenda too, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so they say that they're having entertainment, live music, recorded music, and DJ music, and they're open till 10 o'clock at night. Is that gonna affect the residents that live around there?
Josh, are you able to answer that?
I mean, it could. There are residences behind it. Um, all their entertainment will be out front, so it should be buffered by the building. Obviously, if they create a nuisance, we'll have to deal with that, but I don't think that has anything to do with their liquor license, which is, I believe, what they're applying for here.
Yes, it is. I was just concerned about the live music. And is there a city ordinance that you can only have loud music or loud parties until such and such a time?
Not really. There, we have a noise ordinance.
Okay.
Um, and we have nuisance ordinances, so it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, and we usually try to mitigate for anything that might be happening or any complaints that we receive. So, you know, we have this, um, Sons of Beer has done it before. We've even had it downtown with the horseshoe.
Yeah, at the Creek Park as well, Josh.
Park. They have music there. Uh, there's residences right next door. We haven't had any complaints.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's kind of one of those wait-and-see. Um, obviously, we went through the land use process for that development, and we didn't receive any comments about that. So it's, it'll just come down to enforcement if we have to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Council Hutchinson, we do have an ordinance on point here. It's ninety-three point five eight in the code.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Um, we had a motion to approve. We didn't have a second yet, or at least I didn't hear one.
I'll second it. This is Council Merritt.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Right, hearing none. Um, Council Ruffelman.
Aye.
Council Hutchison.
Aye.
Council Youngman.
Aye.
Council Merritt.
Aye.
Council Papke.
Aye.
Council Law.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. We'll move on. Um, in this visitors appearances and requests section, I have a, uh, something to go over. So, uh, we are now on visitors, appearances, and requests. As we are again doing meetings virtually, I'd like to remind everybody that those wishing to submit a public comment or comments either to a specific agenda item or otherwise, may do so in written format by email or by mail. This information can be found on our website, and any comments received prior to the meeting will be shared with the council, city council, posted on our city website and part of the record. As an additional reminder, this meeting is being simultaneously broadcasted on Facebook. However, the council is unable to see your comments during the meeting, and comments on that feed are not part of our official record. So with that said, uh, did we receive any written comments, uh, for today's meeting?
No, we're not received.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see any in our emails right before the meeting, so. Um, we'll move on to council presentations. Item number four, Creek County Health Department update. Katie Bump.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, council members, for having me. I, am I able to share a screen? Doesn't look like it.
James.
No needed to have by any presentations delivered before, so we could incorporate them as part of the record.
All right. Well, then I will off the cuff, and I will send the presentation to you all for, um, so that you can see it later if you need a visual.
Yeah, and Katie, this is Steve. Katie, I, uh, I've been forwarding to the council and the management team, uh, the data you, you've provided the city, so, um, they're familiar with it, and I'm sorry, I, uh, I, I think we went through this last time as well, so I should have made it more clear that we need to have that up front.
That is all right. Um, I apologize, um, as well for not clarifying upfront. So, um, I'll, I did keep this brief. Um, so hopefully that's helpful to be able to follow along. Uh, basically, I wanted to go over case counts really quick, just so you have an idea of trends. You know, that's in the news a lot, but I also wanted to give an idea of, um, Creek County-specific data and specifically what's happening in the central Oregon region and, um, and in Creek County. I want to talk a little bit about, um, the effects of the current Omicron variant and what, um, Creek County Public Health and our partners have been doing in response to the, um, the current situation. So the, in central Oregon, last, last week, we had five thousand four hundred sixty-seven new cases reported over a week timeframe, uh, compared to the last surge in cases with the Delta variant in central Oregon that topped out at about, um, eleven hundred, between eleven hundred and twelve hundred cases in the region. So to have upwards of, um, fifty-five hundred cases in the course of a week is a, a drastic increase, certainly. Um, again, that is central Oregon, uh, numbers. The state numbers are expected to peak early next week. Um, central Oregon tends to lag, so when we start hearing, um, in the news that things are plateauing, that things are peaking around the state, that generally means that we have about a week and a half, um, to go. Uh, our, our local data is showing us that we'll peak somewhere around February tenth. For Creek County-specific numbers, um, last week, we had, we recorded five hundred thirty-one tests, um, positive tests. That compares to a peak during the Delta surge of two hundred and one cases in a week. So we've, again, significantly increased, uh, what we thought was already a significantly high number. Omicron is more likely to be upper respiratory than lower. And there's a variety of symptoms, and there may just be one symptom of, of many. Uh, folks are, are maybe not reporting having a fever. They may not have the loss of taste and smell that we were earlier with earlier variants. Um, they may just report a symptom of a sore throat or, um, a cough. So it is definitely evolving and, um, continues to, to change and, um, that, that certainly doesn't mean, I'll, I'll touch on this less around severity. Um, but it is something to be mindful of, that the symptoms aren't necessarily tracking the exact same as they have been with earlier variants. Um, the next little bit of data I want to, uh, give credit to, we partner closely with St. Charles. Uh, Creek County Public Health does have, um, an epidemiologist that we rely on, that we have a couple in the central Oregon region that does a lot of our, our data work. We also partner closely with St. Charles. Um, Michael Johnson does a lot of our data analysis for us specifically around, um, hospital trends. So I, I certainly want to give due credit. Um, he's been observing hospitalization trends across the state and very specifically in Region Seven where we reside. Right now, Region One, which is that Portland metro area, is, um, really the only area in the state where there might be a reduction in the number of hospitalization and hospitalized, hospitalized, hospitalizedized misgracious COVID patients. Um, all other regions still appear to be on the rise, including us in Region Seven. Again, um, here in central Oregon, we tend to lag, so we can expect to see that the hospitalization numbers continue to rise even when elsewhere in the state we might see them plateau and drop off. We're about a week and, a week and a half behind the rest of the state. As of this morning at, um, about five o'clock this morning, there were seventy-three COVID nineteen positive inpatients at St. Charles. Seven of those were in ICU and five of those seven were on ventilators. Um, when I was talking about symptoms earlier of the Omicron variant, um, I do tend to cringe a little bit when I hear Omicron referred to as, as mild. Um, certainly, people have had individual experiences with several of the COVID variants that can be described as mild. Um, but a pandemic is not defined by an individual experience. It's about the impact this illness has had on the majority. Um, and that impact on the majority has effects on our systems. So Omicron might be less severe than the Delta variant, but it's certainly not, not mild. We are still seeing, as you can tell, we have seventy-three people in the hospital right now. Um, people aren't hospitalized of mild illnesses. Um, they don't die of mild illnesses. So, uh, individuals might have a mild experience with it, but overall, and overall, it might be less severe than the Delta variant, but certainly nothing to, uh, not take seriously. We have noted, um, some good news, again, because Omicron is showing to be less severe than the Delta variant. We are noting, um, shorter lengths of stay. So we have these large numbers of people being sick, large numbers of folks being hospitalized. They tend to be in the hospital for shorter durations. Um, and what that's creating is a lot of turnaround in our hospital system. Um, so since, let's see, the day after Christmas, so December twenty-sixth, the majority, seventy-six percent of COVID patients in St. Charles had a length of stay five days or less. Forty-six percent were there for two days or less. So there's a lot of churn in and out of the doors of our hospital, which is, is a lot of work on their staff. It's different work, right? It's, it's moved from that really high-intensity work of having folks on ventilators and in ICU, and now it's that, that work of really transition, intaking and, um, getting people in and out. So it's, it's just, it's still very much affecting our hospital system. It's affecting it in a little bit of a different way. We have noted another, um, dynamic right now with our hospital system is that emergency room visits increased. Um, so the previous, um, highest number of COVID nineteen-specific emergency room visits was in September. They had seven hundred twenty-six emergency room visits specific to COVID in September. January, they surpassed that by sixty-nine percent. They're projected to have over twelve hundred emergency room visits specifically related to COVID. And so again, there's that shifting in how the disease is affecting our hospital system. They're seeing a lot coming through their ED. Um, the response is, uh, is shifting a bit as well. Uh, there's still large emphasis on, uh, prevention. So vaccinations, especially during this Omicron increase, um, boosters have been showing. So folks who have received their two doses of a series, either Moderna or Pfizer, and then have gotten that booster dose, that's, um, showing especially effective at preventing severe illness and keeping people out of the hospital. Um, public health is promoting vaccine providers and events, so we have pop-up clinics, um, at the library here in Creek County. Usually weekly, we have appointments at, here in our clinic. Um, and there's several, several locations around town at, uh, primary care providers, pharmacies that are offering vaccines. We're offering up PPE on a limited basis. We do have N ninety-five masks available, so if there are businesses or organizations that would like that, like masks with that added protection, um, being in N ninety-five, we do have, have some of those available, and folks can just call our front desk for those. We're not providing testing at the, at the health department, but we are coordinating with partners and promoting testing services that are here in town as well as in the region. We also supported a subcontract with Curative to offer rapid PCR tests here in town on Mondays. So that is a resource that we're continuing to sustain and will look at expanding as needed. Um, are, another part of our response is assuring access to treatment. This has been ongoing since monoclonal antibody therapy became available. Um, unfortunately, that has largely shown ineffective against Omicron. However, since the, um, development of oral antivirals, Paxlovid has been one that's been working. It's just in extreme short supply. Uh, when that first came out, originally, Prineville residents had to go to Bend to pick up this treatment because it's only available through a couple pharmacies. Um, we worked with partners, um, to secure Paxlovid here in town and is now available in Prineville um, thanks to those coordinated efforts between, um, public health and our medical and pharmacy partners. Um, so people don't have to drive to Bend, or they don't have to wait for a courier um, to deliver those medications, which is extremely helpful, especially for folks that are at high risk. Uh, I would like to note that this is one example of many throughout the pandemic where the medical community in Creek County has problem-solved and supported each other's efforts uh, with the goal to best serve our community. Um, I definitely have sincere gratitude for our neighbors across the hallway at Mosaic Medical Prineville and across town at St. Charles for advocating and acting with us in big ways. Um, it's when I talk to our partners across the state, um, and even in the region, we, we have a really positive relationships that, um, are not the norm between public health and our, our medical partners. So I'm incredibly appreciative for that. Um, recently, local public health, uh, so Creek County Public Health is shifting resources to support congregate settings, and those include schools, long-term care facilities, um, homeless shelters, the jail, treatment centers. Um, those supports include nurse consultation to mitigate the spread of disease. Uh, we can provide PPE, um, testing supplies for certain populations, contact tracing, and, and, um, referrals to other supports as needed. Um, Oregon Health Authority has launched a new website and phone number to field questions and offer support after someone has tested positive or been exposed. And that was set up because local public health is no longer calling everyone who tests positive. Um, so we will no longer be doing outreach phone calls. We are still available to field phone calls. So anytime folks call our front desk, we will, um, we're available to answer questions. We have nurses that are designated to COVID response, um, each day. So they just call our main number, and then they'll get rerouted to whichever of our nurses is on call for that day. Um, so you do not have to call that state line. It's another resource. You can always call us. And we'll always be here as a local resource, even if there are those added state supports. I think that, I think I'll leave it there, and if there are additional questions, I would be happy to fill them.
Thank you, Katie. Does any, any of the council have any questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank Katie for sending over the information on a regular basis, and just know that we appreciate that, Katie, and we forward that out to our teams and our council. So please, please keep that up, and we look forward to, to having the presentation you just gave. So thanks again for your time. You've always been available when I've asked.
Of course. Thank you.
This is Ruffelman. I do have a question or a comment, rather. Um, my wife and I have both been tested on Mondays at the, um, Veterans Administration, and they have their setup to take anybody. Uh, they do twenty tests per half hour. And so it's just a matter of going online to, uh, and I think the health department, Katie would probably have the access information for people to contact, so they, they can schedule their, their, uh, testing to be done. There's no charge for the test, and it, that's a very simple process to go through. You get your results in approximately two hours after the test is completed.
Yeah, it is a, it's a self, self-swab. Um, so you just swab your lower nostril. It's not the, the brain swab.
That's correct.
And I will, I will send, uh, the information about that testing resource along with the slides. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
This is Patricia Youngman. I was curious as to where the Paxlovid is available in our town? The antiviral?
We, mm-hmm, the Paxlovid right now, um, is, so St. Charles is able to prescribe, and, um, our nurse practitioner here at the health department is able to prescribe. And the two pharmacies that are carrying it, um, the Mosaic Pharmacy, the clinic here has it, and, um, Clinic Pharmacy has it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Uh, if there's nobody else from the council, um, Katie, thank you for presenting tonight and sharing the information with us.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to, uh, item number five, Edco presentation. Kelsey Lucas and Brian Iverson.
Hello.
Hello.
James, you have? Oh, there we go. Okay, so I am gonna give an update for twenty twenty-one for everyone, and then if you guys have any questions along the way, you can stop me, and then also we can talk about any other things after. Um, this will be review for a few of you that were at the event last week, but everyone else, it'll be new information. Um, so here is a summary of our activity for twenty twenty-one as far as pending projects go. Um, majority of those have been recruitment projects, so new businesses looking to move to Creek County at about sixty-three percent. Um, about thirty-one percent are existing business expansions. And then a small portion, about five percent, are startups, which we haven't had a ton of startup activity in the past. So, um, this is encouraging that there has been more of that in the past year or so. And then industry composition for these projects. Um, a lot are in the manufacturing industry, and then also building products, high-technology aviation and aerospace, renewable energy, and agriculture. And then for development opportunities for businesses, um, we've had quite a bit of spec development in the past year. The Prineville Campus, which was formerly the Woodgrain Property, uh, they have about two hundred thousand square feet of manufacturing space, and we have one company currently moving in, and then additional companies looking up there, but they definitely have room for a lot more companies to site there and grow. Um, there's also twenty-one thousand square feet in Tom McCall Industrial Park, which there hasn't been much activity there in the past decade or so. So for that to go up so quickly and for all of those buildings to already be full is encouraging. Um, and the Spencers who own a lot of the lots up there are willing to either build more spec or look to, into build-to-suit opportunities. And then for Baldwin Industrial Park, there was about forty thousand square feet that went up a couple years ago, and all of those four buildings, there are ten thousand square feet each, have been filled in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Um, last I heard, there was about thirty-three hundred square feet left. So most of these businesses, it's been a range of about twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred square feet. So approximately a third of each building. And then land inventory, we are one of the few cities in the entire state with land parcels over a hundred acres. So most of the state projects have been looking in that range, like eighty to one fifty-ish, some up to two fifty in the past couple of years. Um, so we're one of the few cities- So we're one of the few cities that can actually compete for those projects in Oregon. Most of the other projects that we've been working with in the past year have been 20 to 50 acres. Various industries, there have also been some like one to five acre-ish for smaller industrial businesses. And then we also have all the airport industrial land that manufacturing or any sort of aerospace companies can move into now that that infrastructure is available since the Helabase has been in operation up there. So there's about 20-ish acres. And there's either airside or land side. So there's potential to have direct access for testing for certain companies or they're looking to be closer to Tom McCall Industrial. There's also space over there. For Enterprise Zone, we currently have 14 active agreements for 2022. So that's about doubled in the past year. Just various ones have been approved in the past. So they came online because they finished finished construction or we had new ones approved in the past couple of years. And the total investment for those 14 agreements is almost 6.5 billion. So pretty high. And then the job creation for all those projects has been 630 jobs. This is our financing structure currently. So we're funded by Kirk County, City of Prineville, private sector. For the next bi-annual budget, we are hoping to bump those up for each sector. We talked about 50,000 in the past, but I think that it sounds like that will be talked about offline. But the business development drivers that we're looking at for the community have been economic development, Chamber and Downtown. So that kind of covers all of our business spaces. Edco focuses on the traded sector and family wage jobs. And then the Chamber is a mix of the commercial, retail and some traded sector, just for the networking piece. And then Downtown Association, just making sure that all the businesses there have what they need to be successful and just improvements to the general community downtown. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Brian?
What would you like me to?
Do you have any updates on downtown activity?
Yeah, sure. I think that on the downtown side, I, hopefully all this, I mean, the, the triangle basically shows, I think, the interwoven connectivity between economic development, which drives business in general for the whole county. And then, of course, that usually downtown tends to be the the last one up and use of the first one out. So I think what we've seen is some more businesses open up downtown and stuff. And hopefully we'll get some more development and stuff in regards to the downtown side. We will, we are hoping to break ground on the archway that will go on Main Street downtown. We were hoping to break ground near the January. It looks like it'll probably close to the end of February. And that will be completely paid for with no tax dollars. And I can always give an further update on that one a little bit later.
I think we can jump to the next slide. Okay, so according to Demographics Now, which is a database through the library system, by the year 2026, the Kirk County area is supposed to see a nine percent population growth, which from 2000 to 2021, we've seen about 23 percent. So almost half of that in a five-year period versus 21-year period. So the area seems to be growing quite a bit quicker. And then if the labor force also grows by the same rate, which currently it's at about 10.5 thousand, we should see about 947 new jobs in the next five years. And then other things going on, we're working on some new lead generation efforts. There's been some other databases that we've used in the past through Edco or through locally in our Kirk County program, which those you have to sift through thousands of leads essentially that people all over the country are competing for. So we're actually working with a local company called Elgify in Redmond. They are a market research company, but they're going to help with lead generation. So they focus on people that are already looking at the area and with certain industries, job titles. So like owners of companies in XYZ industry that we focus on locally. And basically they flip the sales funnel upside down. So they start with those people and move up from there. So hopefully it'll be a more targeted approach. Virtual career fairs, it's been different. We're trying to raise awareness on the economic development industry in general. So the Oregon Economic Development Association, we have been working on the marketing committee, which I co-chair with someone from Greater Portland, Inc. Sorry about that. Just talking about Career Pass, how we got to the industry, different projects we've gotten to work on, things like that. So about the high school and college level, we actually have a panel coming up for Oregon State on February 2nd. So people around the state are just gonna and to talk about how they got to their organization role, things like that. And then for our local program and for our regional program, just with all the changes that we've seen in the past few months, we are working on a lot of strategic planning. So we just adopted our 2022 through 2024 strategic plan locally. So that is available for anyone that is interested in seeing it. A lot of it has been pretty consistent, but we added a few things, updated numbers, things like that. And then we are in the works of working on our regional strategic plan, both internally and externally. So that'll be available in the near future as well. We just had our annual lunch last Wednesday. That was at Brusada Ranch. So new venue. Good attendance. There was about 120 to 130 people there. So pretty good with the circumstances. And it was a nice change in space to get people to a different place in Kirk County. And our next event will be the maiden Kirk County tour. So planning that in the works, it'll probably be sometime in the spring. Depending on, we're trying to leave a two-week period between each of our Edco events, just to make sure that no one is getting sick and just for marketing and planning purposes. So working on getting that on the schedule. Here is our top 10 employers from 2021, which this will get updated in the next couple of months for 2022. But it kind of speaks to the diversification that we've seen over the past decade with the different industries. There's manufacturing and distribution, education. We have high tech, the construction trades, leisure and hospitality, public administration, healthcare, building products, and then some more environmental focused industries. And then building off of that, this data is from the Oregon Employment Department. So Damon Runberg there does a really good job at presenting all of the employment statistics. And this focuses on workforce. So with the industry diversification that we've seen, this shows our recovery pre-pandemic versus now. So shows monthly employment as, oops. Monthly employment is a share of the same month in 2019. So before the pandemic and Kirk County had a less severe drop and a quicker rebound than Deschutes County and the entire state. So as of November 2021, employment levels were up 5% from November 2019. And Deschutes were up about 1% and the state of Oregon was down about 3%. So this graph kind of shows why Kirk County bounced back so fast and saw more modest recessionary impact. A lot of that can be attributed to the data center industry. So three industry sectors that have employment lovers, levels higher than the pre-pandemic levels are information up 110 jobs, professional and business services up 140 jobs, and construction up 170 jobs. And those have helped push the county into net growth despite notable job losses in leisure and hospitality, government and private education. And then as far as unemployment rate on the labor front, this has improved dramatically too. The seasonally adjusted unemployment rate had dropped to 5.9% in November, which is only 1.5 percentage points above the pre-pandemic low and pretty consistent with levels in 2018. And then one of our key focuses for the upcoming year is trying to keep residents in Kirk County, since there are a lot of high-paying jobs available. So from this map, you can see a good chunk of the working population in Kirk County commutes outside of the area for work. And then they commute back to the residence, residences at the end of the day. So there are a couple thousand people coming into the community to work as well, but there's still a net of about 2,000 people leaving. And we want to continue to raise awareness on all the family wage jobs that we have available that various industries are looking to fill at comparable rates with out the time and money spent commuting outside of the area that can be spent with their families and/or friends. And then looking at the next slide, kind of related to that, we have been working on a business and industry video for about almost two years now. We started it before the pandemic with Owen Morningstar at Morningstar Films. So she completed that for our event last week and it shows all the different industries, companies and jobs that we have, which from the slide deck, I don't think it actually plays on the PDF. So I'll send out the link after. But it's about a minute and a half and she did a good job to showing snippets of all the different businesses that we have here and different job opportunities that there are for people locally. And that is all I have. If anyone has questions.
Kelsey, I got, I have a question for you. If, say, one of the council members or somebody hears of a great job opportunity or a business searching, I'm obvious, I'm going to reach out to you and let you know and see if it's been, been discussed. But I wanted to let the rest of the council know that, you know, is that something we could do if, if we hear of a, a business that's looking to relocate? So I'm sure you're probably on, on most of those, but I just didn't know.
So that's been kind of been saying in the past, people haven't reached out as much for this role since people are having such a hard time with staffing. It seems to be more of a trend in the past year or two. So I know the Chamber has a landing page already on their website for jobs available. The only challenge they're having is getting updates from companies when those roles are filled or when there are additional ones added. So we're going to sit down in the next couple of weeks. We've been talking at our board meetings the past couple of months on how to better market directly to people in Kirk County. So we had talked about a potential billboard. I think we're going to go the digital marketing route just because of availability with that in Kirk County is limited. So if anyone is interested on being a, being on a committee for that too, we'll probably meet with the Chamber. And then Seth at the county wants to also dig deeper into that. So yeah, I had a call earlier today with, there's a woman in town with a granola business. So she bakes it and she's looking for interns like every other week. The pay is high. So just making connections with like the CTE program at the school, like the culinary department or the different internship programs around the region. So students can also fill those roles. So that's an option too. And our local program is through the Chamber. So a lot of that gets, I guess, sourced through Kim.
Thank you. Any other?
But long story short, yes, you can share those with us and we'll kind of make a list of those and get those added to the website.
Okay.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Kelsey, can you, it's okay to share that company that moved into the Prineville Campus? So can you just real quick, just in a couple of minutes, just share with the council? I know you worked hard with Eric and I and Josh and Casey and a whole host of other people to promote repurposing that facility. And I think you're on to something. I think the council would love to hear about.
Yeah, so we have a company moving in from Eugene originally. So they have a company called Sherp Tech there. And they do these fancy custom trailers. And then they're partnering with a company locally and they have a startup called Mars XV.
So counsel law, that's, that's code for overlanding. So just thought you might be interested in that.
Yeah. So essentially they're like truck bed attachments for overlanding. So there's a company called Earth Cruiser in Bend that has a similar concept, but they have like these full vehicles that can get pretty costly because it is essentially like an RV condensed, but made for extreme terrain. So this is more usable for the everyday adventure. And yeah, so they partnered to start up this company here and they moved into one of the buildings at the Prineville Campus. And they're in the process of moving in all their machinery right now. And they were able to qualify for an enterprise zone agreement. And they also presented at the event last week and it sounds like they're looking to hire between 20 to 50 people in the next handful of years, which now it's a team of two. So they are actively looking for people to work various roles. But the, the company with the website up right now is called Sherp Tech. So that's S-H-E-R-P-T-E-K. So you can kind of get an idea for the types of products they'll be selling.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kelsey or Brian?
This is Councilor Merritt. Can we get some more information about the archway? I've heard about it twice now, but really don't know any details.
Yeah, sure. I think that the plan was for me to come and present to you guys a couple of different times and it just didn't quite make it happen. I think we were going to do it in September and then another time in October, November. And that was just for whatever reason, either from staff or from my standpoint, it didn't work for a timing standpoint. Cause I do actually want to come and talk to you. I have Josh and Casey and as well as Steve have been super helpful in moving the process along. But where we're at is the, as well as the rest of the public work staff in regards to making it happen. We, we feel we have money from the Chamber is chipped in, Facebook is chipped in. Representative Vicky Breeze Iverson's office is able to also, from her ARPA funds is chipped in. As well as the city thinks they, they've all, Casey's been working with a few of the contractors. And between all of that, those funds, we have enough money to put up a really cool archway that will, I think I've showed it to you guys before and I, I don't have the ability to share my screen. But that would be right on, as you turn from Third Street on to Main, right past the old Bank of the Cascades building. There would be an archway that would go up that would be made out of metal and timbers with a sign that says Prineville that'll be lighted. So it'll be an archway that'll be tall enough that'll span sidewalk to sidewalk. And so we're, and, and it'll be owned by the city ultimately. After, after we're, because obviously we will have a maintenance agreement and that sort of stuff with the city, but we want the city to actually own it. So we don't own it. And then, and we're working on that. And, and our contractor that's doing it all has worked with Kate, who's an engineer that's done a lot of work with the city. So all those plans and everything are kind of working through that, that process. And then while we've worked through that process, Casey and I have have looked, looks like we got enough money to potentially do from there, going all the way back to Fourth Street. We'd like to redo all the sidewalks and put lights that are, that are just like the lights that we have when you go to Fourth Street and turn right like you're going to City Hall on both sides of the street. So we think we have enough money to do all of that. And it was my intention to hopefully come to you guys at some point and ask you guys to do the rest of the lights downtown. But we'll see where that looks like at some point, but we'd really like we'll see where that looks like, uh, at some point, but we'd really like to be the the impetus of making all of that happen. And I think once that happens, doing the rest of the lighting isn't that difficult of a scenario, but getting those sidewalks all done, we could fix all those root wads that are coming up out of the ground and everything there too as well at the same time. Uh, so we're waiting on a final cost from Kate. She's kind of working on that piece. There and, and, uh, I think it would be kind of a cool thing for downtown to define it. Especially with the courthouse going in on the south side of the old bowling alley area. Um, it really creates kind of that connectivity that we've always kind of been looking for.
Thank you.
And I'm more than happy to give you a more detailed. Well, not in February, I'll be in Salem for the entire month, but, uh, I can do it by Zoom because you guys are Zooming. So that's not a problem either. So let me know, uh, I think once we get the plans finalized and we can show maybe some streetscape stuff, that would be probably good for you guys to see the visualization of that.
Yeah, Brian, I, I agree. I know, I know, uh, you've worked, worked close with Casey and Josh and, you know, I've seen those renditions. I think that's what Mayor or excuse me, Mayor VBN Councilman, a council personnel would like to see as long, along with Gail. So I think, uh, I'll work with you guys on that and make sure that next meeting, maybe a quick update, Brian, and we can get some renditions out there for people to look at. That, that makes sense. Thank you.
And then the other, the other side I could touch on is the workforce stuff. So I think we're going to have some additional ARPA money available that's coming down through the, we're working with the chamber on some of that. And one of the things that Kim's really talked about is how do we target some of the, some of that money to target investments of, of this project that Kelsey's been working on to get people to work locally instead of traveling, you know, uh, to Bend or Redmond or whatever for a job. So we're looking at what sort of targeted you know, enhancements that we could give employers that they could then also give employees for like signing bonuses or something. We are working through some of the rules in regards to the federal requirements there, but I think it's allowed. So it'd be kind of cool if we could give a business that's having a hard time finding employees an ability to get a twenty five hundred dollar hiring bonus or something like that, that's paid for to stay local. So that might be, you know, things like that is kind of what we're looking at there. So I thought there's some additional money for that. And the governor as well is coming out with a two hundred million dollar kind of workforce training thing. So I'm, I'm going to really bird dog back to see if there is some opportunities there that we might be able to plug into.
That's great. Well, thank you both for presenting. Is there any, uh, any other questions from the council? Brian, I, I do have one quick question. Um, if this archway goes well on that, that side of, uh, Third Street, um, is there a possibility of going to down the other side of Maine and putting one in on the other side of, uh, the street?
Uh, you talked to your planning department about that. I, 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 um, you know, that's Crooked River Highway there when you go south. So it, it's still, ODOT is you know, still involved in that portion of it. Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I they, they have a little bit more say there. I would love to do a, a double archway of some kind that goes north and south. That way both sides of that downtown. Um, I think where Jason, to be uh, honest, I think what we'll see is I would love to see our archway go in. All the Third Street redevelopment happens with the ODOT dollars that are happening there. And then I, and then you're getting the courthouse built at the same time. And then I, I, I think after all that has kind of moved along where it's actually happening. I think that's really where we would take a look and say, okay, now what? Uh, the lighting is most important. I would say to all of the businesses and property owners, we had an annual meeting with all, I sent a letter out to six hundred and some odd property owners and businesses in downtown core. And lighting to them was the number one thing. And then of course, parking, uh, which has been an ongoing issue ever since I've lived in this community. And I think it's happened ever since there were cars. Um, so I think, but lighting would be great because if we have that connectivity, I'd like to see what happens with the courthouse and their ability to kind of expand the lighting or in and around what's going to, I always say courthouse, I say Justice Center. Um, what, how they're going to be able to expand that. And then I would like to focus on how do we keep the lighting contiguous from where the, the Justice Center would be to downtown? That would be most important, I think, from a funding scenario as well as also how we can expand that lighting to North Maine, at least up to the bridge and as far, you know, over to Barney Prines and some of those areas as much as we can to lighten these, these corridors that people would walk, bike, ride, um, or drive. You know, the more we can do that, I think is the most vital thing. And then I think the next step would be, you know, more beautification and those sort of things. So.
Well, thank you very much. If, is there any other questions for Brian or Kelsey? All right. Thank you both for presenting and and, uh, looking forward to upcoming new year.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor BBN Council for letting us present.
Thank you for your investment and trying to let go for sixteen years or so now. So we appreciate you guys stepping up and staying the course. And I think it's proven to keep Primeville healthy. That's important.
All right. Thank you. Um, we'll move on to council business. Um, this is the council committee appointments. Annual review and this was carried over from the last meeting. Um, I did, I didn't receive any requests to for changes to the, uh, to the committee appointments. Um, so as of right now, it'll stay, stay how it is. If somebody has uh, or needs to change that, please reach out to me, uh, let me know and we can discuss and I will work with the other counselors uh, to get those changes made. Unless somebody has a comment, uh, on it now, I'll move on. Okay. Uh, staff reports and requests, uh, city managers report, Steve Forrester.
Thank you, Mayor BB. Another quick report tonight, uh, keeping in mind that we've had lots of information provided to the council from a couple of different aspects, uh, worked with mayor and worked with the department leadership and of course worked, uh, on my, uh, personal situation, uh, in my annual review portion. So having said, I don't have a lot to, lot to go over, but I have some very good, uh, news to go over. Uh, our, our, uh, city engineer and team leader Eric Klon led the city team that met today with a very large, uh, potential development that is looking for a significant, significant investment in Primeville. We're under an NDA. We'd like to give you more information. Um, and if things move ahead, obviously more information will be available. Got any questions, get ahold of Eric and I. Very, very exciting. We continue to have big companies, serious companies, small companies that are serious. Continue to want to invest in our community. It's fabulous. Um, we talked a little bit about, uh, Kelsey. I asked Kelsey to, to, to brief you a little bit on that, on that camper company. They, they make some really cool stuff. Uh, he's sat next to Steve at Edco, uh, the truck beds are more aircraft. They're, you know, they're not like the farming truck beds that I have, which that's a totally different application. Um, what they're building, really aircraft technology, aluminum, lightweight, lots of cubby holes, lots of lock cabinetry that facilitate an overlanding, uh, living quarters. And it's just fabulous. Plus the, the overlanding trailer, the sherpa trailer and, uh, I couldn't think of a better manufacturer to go into that facility up there, uh, for noise pollution, light pollution. All the things that go with a lot of different industries. This is going to fit really well. On the railroad, Matt, uh, picked up some additional inbound lumber. With a shortage of truck drivers, we've had more and more people come to the city of Prangal Railroad. Look for an opportunity to move lumber out of California primarily up to, uh, Central Oregon. So this is something that's going into jail win over in Ben, into their window and door business. Um, a significant order right up front. This could be an ongoing situation. So this has become a big part of our railroad portfolio this last year between, uh, Brightwood and, and the trust company and now jail win. And then finally, uh, I'll, I'll be returning to including in the, in the packet, a city manager update and I'll start that on February eighth and, uh, picking up the highlights in there. So you'll have something to reference on what's going on by department. Do we have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. We'll move on to, uh, oh, did someone have a question? All right. Thought I heard something. Um, move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the council? Council Alphman?
I have a couple. I attended a Crea meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh, just after the last, our last council meeting. Um, nothing real exciting to, to share other than, uh, concerns about, about, uh, infrastructure because of the because of the direction that Oregon is going with the electric vehicles. There is an inadequacy in the infrastructure to adequately charge, in particular, large trucks that are going to be shipping and we, uh, shipping all, they ship all over the state now, but they're the request is for these, the trucking industry to get into electronic vehicles or electric vehicles. But there is inadequate, uh, charging sites for those uh, outside of the metropolitan areas. So there are some real concerns about infrastructure keeping up with the demands that the state is, is in imposing on, um, on the transportation grid. Uh, the other meeting I had that I wanted to share with you had to do with, uh, was the, uh, COACT meeting, the Central Oregon area transportation committee. And, uh, the portion that I shared with the group had to do with the safety, uh, at the rail overpass on Elliot Lane. And the city railroad is, is fine as far as trestle that we have, that is safe for the rail to cross. But there is, um, there's such a bottleneck and inadequate views of transportation of cars coming out from Elliot Lane onto the highway or turning on to, onto Elliot Lane from the highway. Uh, that's really an issue that needs the state to step up to the plate. And reconsider how best to improve the safety at that intersection. So those are the concerns and that's what I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. There any other committee reports from council?
This is Janet. I have one. So Ochko Forest Restoration Collaboration. Um, during that meeting, the Forest Service said they're still working by telework. And they figured they'll be doing that until mid-spring. Um, they received money from the infrastructure bill. Um, so Ochko will be getting some, but they don't know how much they're going to be getting or what exactly, or the, all the details of that yet. So, uh, the other thing that really threw us off was Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council. They, uh, sent us a letter on January eleventh, um, informing us of changes that COIC is making, um, to how they support the forest collaborative efforts in Central Oregon. So they've been supporting that work since two thousand and one and, um, COCC has the primary, has primarily been to provide contract facilitation services to both the Deschutes Collaborative and the Ochko Collaborative. So COIC has increasingly felt that it is not necessarily the highest and best use of COC, COIC to do that. Um, they think that because, um, they said they aren't better suited to do this work versus a competitively procured, pure procured contract facilitator. So in the end, what this means is that, um, COIC will be terminating the services for facilitating the group for the Ochko National Forest as of March first, twenty twenty-two. They've already terminated their services with the Deschutes Collaborative as of January first, twenty twenty-two. Um, we don't know all the details of what's going to happen after that, or who's going to help us facilitate it. Um, as yet we're still working through all those details and that's the end unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. Any other committee reports?
Um, this is Patricia Youngman and I have one on neighbor impact. Um, right now we have an open board position for Cook County. So we're looking for another board member. So if anyone is interested, um, neighbor impact, um, look online and they have all of the, the information there to apply.
Thank you. Uh, any other committee reports? Right, hearing none. We'll, uh, move on to ordinances, ordinance number one, two, seven, three. Granting OTC a telecommunications franchise, second presentation, city attorney Jared Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is the second presentation of ordinance twelve seventy-three. Uh, Marcus Bott, who presented, uh, two weeks ago to this council is on the line, is available for any additional questions. Just a reminder, this is a franchise agreement with that company. Uh, it would go in, upon today's passing, if the council did pass it, it would go into effect once, uh, once, um, OTC accepted the franchise agreement.
All right. Is there any questions from council? All right, hearing none. Um, open to a motion to approve resolution number one, two, seven, three for a second presentation.
This is Janet. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one, two, seven, three.
This is Steve Alphman. I'll second that motion.
Sorry, did I say resolution?
You did.
All right, sorry. Ordinance number one, two, seven, three. Um, so we have a, a motion and a second to approve ordinance number one, two, seven, three for a second presentation. Uh, any further discussion? All right, Council Alphman?
Aye.
Council Hutchison?
Aye.
Council Youngman?
Aye.
Council Mayor?
Aye.
Council Papke?
Aye.
Council Law?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. Right, uh, no resolutions. Um, we already discussed visitors, appearances and requests. Uh, Jared, I'd like to hand it over to you to move into executive session.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, the city of Primeville will be meeting an executive session and that's pursuant to RS one ninety-two, six sixty, uh, subsection two, uh, I and RS one ninety-two six sixty, paragraph eight, which allows the city council to review and evaluate the employment, employment-related performance of the chief executor, chief executive officer of the public body. So the council and the public are aware of the logistics based on the virtual meeting. The public line will remain open during our executive session and the Facebook video stream will have in essence a screen saver. The council will need to exit the, the room, the, this Zoom invite and re-sign on in a couple of minutes, uh, probably about five minutes to allow our IT department the opportunity to get things ready. But you'll be joining that new Zoom meeting, which is the executive session meeting. And then once we're finished with the executive session, council will exit that room and then re-enter the public room. And then, um, once that happens, uh, when we come back into the public room, the video stream will once again show up on the simultaneous video stream. So with, with that, uh, Mayor, if you'd like to, uh, not adjourn this meeting, but, uh, as for, uh, no, I guess it would be an adjournment, uh, and then come back in five minutes for, uh, for an executive session. no, I guess it would be the adjournment uh and then come back in five minutes for uh for an executive session. It with the understanding that we will be coming back into public meeting.
Yes, well, uh if there's no questions, we'll move into uh we'll adjourn for about five minutes and move come back into executive session and then uh after executive session, we'll return to um open session.
Technically, it's a recess.
Okay, we'll recess.
I know I I I was forgetting the word. It's late. I apologize, Councilor Papke.
I got your back.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Alright, uh thank you all. Take five minutes and uh we'll see you guys in a few minutes. Alright, well, we'll open uh regular session back up. And uh I don't know if there's any discussion, we need to have any discussion on what we have in executive session or if we're ready for a motion. Not hearing any discussion, open to a motion.
This is Janet. I'll make a motion to approve uh the city manager's increase in salary to the five percent for the CPI. And then in addition to that, a twenty-five thousand dollar bonus.
This is Steve Alphman. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to increase uh the city manager's wages by the five percent CPI increase and a in addition, a twenty-five thousand dollar bonus.
What are your information? So just to clarify, so the motion of the five percent will raise the base pay rate to one sixty-one, six twenty-nine annually, correct?
That is correct.
Good, thank you.
Alright. So we do have the motion and a second um for that and the bonus would be paid by at the end of January. Is there any further discussion? Alright.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you so much.
Second, no further discussion. Councilor Alphman?
Aye.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councilor Youngman?
Aye.
Councilor Merritt?
Aye.
Councilor Papke?
Aye.
Councilor Law?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. That passes unanimously. Steve, thank you for the job you do.
Yeah, thanks.
For the city. Uh I say uh we're very grateful.
I am too.
Alright.
Glad to be part of it. Thanks, everybody.
Is there any other discussion we need to have before we adjourn?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're adjourned.